Well, good afternoon and Happy New Year to those of you able to join us today. You know, it's really with great pleasure that I invite each and every one of you and welcome you to the swearing in ceremony for Dr. Pam Nutt. It is certainly a season where public service is incredibly meaningful across this country, and particularly right here at home in Henry County. So this Board of Education is beginning a new calendar year with unparalleled model of unified governance that is an envy of Boards of Education across the state and nation. And as we come together and think about taking steps into a new year, it is really the model of unity and humility that our Board of Education continues to pursue for our community, us as a team. Really because of that, that I am confident that this Board of Education is about to be unwaveringly committed to some people of our community and the opportunity they have because they are educated in Henry County. Celebrate Dr. Pam Nutt, who really needs no introduction and no recognition of the two years of service that she's had. She started, of course, when she was three and is now on her 27th year, 25th year of serving at this Board of Education. You know, at this time, I do, before we get on with business, need to recognize there are many special guests in the audience today. I'll start by acknowledging that the members of our Board of Education are here to support Dr. Nutt. And in the room is Mrs. Pope and Mrs. Edwards, and we're thankful you are here. And of course, waiting in the hallway are Mr. McDaniel and Mrs. Cobb. I'm also pleased that Judge Kelly Powell is with us today and will perform today's service and ceremony, and it's good to see you, Judge Powell. The members of our executive cabinet are in the room to celebrate our Board of Education. And of course, we have the friends, the family, and the leaders of this organization of Dr. Nutt, and we're thankful that they are here. Of particular importance is the principals that are able to join us today, as well as Dr. Oath Superintendent of Rockdale County Schools. It is great to have you with us. So let's get things underway. Here's how we will proceed. Judge Powell, I would love for you to join me at the microphone. We have one board member in here at this time, and in our responsibly-distanced event, we will conclude these important proceedings, and then we will actually rotate to our next board member for their private ceremony. For those of you joining us live stream, we're thrilled that you're with us, and thank you for celebrating with us today. At this time, I turn it over to you, Judge Powell. Congratulations, Pam Nutt.
Thank you. What an honor it is to swear in Dr. Nutt, who is also my longtime friend. When you're ready, if you will place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right Make sure you're in the right place that they tell you. All right. Do you, Dr. Pam Nutt, a citizen of Henry County and being an employee of Henry County Board of Education and the recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, do you hereby solemnly swear and affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Georgia? Do you further solemnly swear or affirm that you will truly and faithfully discharge all the duties required of you by law as a member of the Board of Education of Henry County to the best of your ability? Do you further swear or affirm that you're not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due this state, any political subdivision or authority thereof, that you're not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, nor of either of the several states, nor of any foreign state, and that you're otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and the laws of Georgia, and that you will support the constitutions of the United States and of this state, and that you have met the residency requirements of this office? Do you swear so help you God?
Yes, I do.
For the loyalty oath. Do you, Dr. Pam Nutt, a citizen of Henry County and being an employee of Henry County Board of Education and the recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, do you hereby solemnly swear and affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Georgia? Do you so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Congratulations. If you...
I do.
Oh, here, I think she has your pen. Okay. I've got this copy for you, too. So these are the... This is for you to take. Okay, and we'll get these filed in and back. Okay.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out. I really appreciate your support, and without your support, I would have never been able to be here. Twenty-five years, that's amazing. I started thinking about that. But I appreciate your love, your support, and talking to me in the middle of the night when decisions were not easily made. I promise not to call you tonight because I think after today, I'll be able to go to sleep. Thank you again for everybody. I appreciate you so. Thank you.
All right. For our guests who joined us today for Dr. Nutt's swearing in, this is your moment to go and enjoy some refreshments in the back. If you'll follow Ms. Cox over here, to my right, your left, she'll escort you to that way. We appreciate you guys being here today.
Well, it is now... I get to welcome you to the board member for District... Pleasure that I see the friends, the family, and the... So this Board of Education begins with recognition by governance model. I am confident that as a team of an unwavering support... So today, we have many distinguished... First, the friends and family, along with the members of our Board of Education who are here to support the swearing-in ceremony. Pope, Mrs. Edwards, and Dr. Nutt, with Mrs. Cobb just waiting outside. I'm also pleased that Judge Powell is with us today to officiate. Members of executive cabinet are here, and of course, we're pleased with our live stream audience. Now, as we get on with our ceremony, recognize Mr. McDaniel... One member at a time so we can remain responsible as we transition our... ...of our space. So I'd like to invite Judge Powell to the podium.
Mr. McDaniel, if you will place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. I have two oaths to give you here today. Do you, Mackenzie C. McDaniel, a citizen of Henry County and being an employee of Henry County Board of Education and the recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, do you hereby solemnly swear and affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Georgia? And do you further solemnly swear or affirm that you will truly and faithfully discharge all the duties required of you by law as a member of the Henry County Board of Education to the best of your ability? And do you further swear or affirm that you're not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due this state, any political subdivision or authority thereof, that you're not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, nor of either of the several states, nor of any foreign state, and that you're otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia, and that you will support the constitutions of the United States and of this state, and that you have met the residency requirements of this office? Do you swear so help you God?
I do.
All right. Now for the loyalty oath. Do you, Mackenzie C. McDaniel, a citizen of Henry County and being an employee of Henry County Board of Education and the recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, do you hereby solemnly swear and affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Georgia? Do you so help you God?
I do.
All right. Congratulations. I have two places for you to sign. If you will sign... Oh, oh, there's yours, I'm sorry. A copy for you to take.
Dr. Davis told me I had five minutes. I promised to take about four and a half. But before I give my remarks, I ask that we continually pray for the thousands of families that have been negatively impacted by the COVID-19 virus. On February 4th, 1968, Arthur King Jr. delivered his last sermon in Ebenezer Baptist Church titled "The Drum Major Instinct." The sermon was inspired by Mark 10th, Chapter, Verses 43, which states, "Whoever wants to become great among you must be your servant." Dr. King, inspired from this passage and saying, "If you want to be important, wonderful; if you want to be recognized, wonderful; if you want to be great, wonderful; but recognize that he who is greatest among you shall be your servant." That's a new definition of greatness. Likewise, Dr. King also said, "And this morning, the thing that I like about it," by giving that definition of greatness, "It means that everyone can be great because everyone can serve." You don't have to have a college degree to serve, nor do you have to have subject and verb agreement. You don't have to know about Plato, nor Aristotle, nor Einstein's theory of relativity to serve. You don't have to know the second theory of thermodynamics and physics to serve. You don't need a heart full of grace, a soul generated by love, and you can be that servant. As a little boy growing up in DeKalb County, all I aspired to do was to serve. From the county room at Green Forest Baptist Church to the pastor's aid board, or helping to grade papers at Henderson Elementary School in Ms. Harris's class, to ROTC and Shemley Charter High School, the military, a police officer, a pastor, and now the Henry County Board of Education, my life's mission has always been the service of others. Some of the hallmark moments of my life have been encouraging and inspiring others to see past the immediate and pierce into the future. However, I recognize that serving and being a service has its rollercoaster moments. There are days of jubilation and days of sadness, days of warmth and days of bitter cold, days in which it is easy to put a smile on your face, and other days, not so much. Yet through it all, we press forward. Being elected to this position by the citizens of the Second District is an honor of my young life. It's an honor undergone by your individual and collective trust and faith in me to do what is right for your students and our district. After all, that is what the Board of Education is about, doing what is right for our students and district, even in the face of public disparagement. Many would say that politics and backroom deals have no place in the supposed nonpartisan arena, and I would agree. So to the faculty and staff, administrators, custodians, after-school employees, to our students and parents, I want you all to know that as a parent with children in this district, I hear you, I see you, I empathize and sympathize with you. Your individual voices and the voices of our collective communities will be heard and will not fall upon impermeable ground. Your thoughts, suggestions, and inputs will be considered. However, I remind us all that there will be moments of disagreement, and through such moments, we must harness as much good as we can for the best solution possible. It goes without saying that we, as a nation, a state, a county, a district, dwell underneath clouds of uncertainty, but I am confident that there is a light at the end of the tunnel. Lastly, I am who I am today because of my loving family. To my loving wife, Tamika, and our four kids, I am the luckiest... I am the luckiest man and father on this side of heaven. When I was weak, you all gave me strength and hope. When I felt discouraged, you provided encouragement. Tamika owed this victory to you. You took this bull by the horns and led us to victory. It was never about you or I. It was always about the students of this district. I am beyond thankful for your love, compassion, companionship, and putting up with me. I can hope, I hope you can bear with me at least another four years, and I still owe you and the kids a vacation. To those who are gathered here today, watching online, I thank you for your support, sweat, and tears in support of our students. My church families and ministry colleagues, I want to say thank you. To my mother, Sharonda Wiley, and my father, Jeff McDaniel, thank you for loving me unconditionally and always pushing me to strive for the best in what life has to offer. To Eric Baron, Lekeitha Terry, Brian Wiley, Maude Baron, and Sean Smith, each of you have played a very important and integral part in my upbringing. A piece of you and your investment in me stands here today. My grandmothers, Alma Jean and Pat Clay, where would I be without a grandmother who wouldn't let me give up nor give in and always reminded me about the calling of my life? Finally, to my... Finally, to my grandmother Baron and my grandfather. Arthur, you taught me the importance of education, and Pappy, I went into the military because of you. I miss you both, and God knows, I wish you both were here. But your legacy lives on, and I would do my best to neither stain nor disgrace what you have invested in me. Finally, I leave you with these words from Alma Thompson and these lyrics. "For if I can help somebody as I pass along, if I can cheer somebody with a word or song, if I can show somebody that he or she is traveling wrong, then my living shall not be in vain." Thank you. God bless you. God bless this county, our students, faculty and staff, and God bless my Board of Education colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. We appreciate it. And for all of his guests that joined us here today, thank you so very much for making your way here. We have a nice little parting gift. You guys will come down front and make your way towards the back. Or you can go out that way, and they'll guide you towards the back entrance. We hope you guys have a safe trip home. Thanks so much.
My great pleasure to welcome you to the swearing-in. Holly Cobb, re-elected to a second term to serve. Education begins with a level of envy for their unified governance. It's recognized across our state and higher to across our country. But it is also within this calendar year that the role of public service has never been more meaningful, vital to the health of communities. So I am optimistic as we start this year that it is because of this Board of Education demonstration of unity are a model for our community, our county, our state, and our country. And it is actually because of their unwavering belief that all children can and will learn at or above grade level and will have an equal opportunity to do so here in Henry County. That we will do great things on behalf of the youth of... So before we get to officiating our swearing-in ceremony, I want to recognize many special guests that are in the room with us today, and of course, welcome our live stream audience who are celebrating across those computer screens. But today in the room, we have Dr. Pam Nutt, Mrs. Sophie Pope, and Mrs. Annette Edwards, and just outside is Mr. McDaniel, as we celebrate this Board of Education swearing-in. Also have the friends and family of Mrs. Cobb, and we're honored that you would be with us today. Our members of executive cabinet are here, and of course, we are honored by Judge Kelly Powell being here to officiate. So as we have proceeded, we will have private swearing-in ceremonies in a responsibly-distanced way, and thank you for joining online. And as this concludes, we unfortunately need to encourage our guests to step out at the conclusion. So Judge Powell, if you'll join me up here, I'll turn this over to you, and y'all can take a step a little closer.
Put our masks on. It is my privilege to swear you in again. Well, you already know what to do. If you will raise your right hand, I have two oaths for you today. Do you, Holly Carter Cobb, being a citizen of Henry County and being an employee of Henry County Board of Education and the recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, do you hereby solemnly swear and affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Georgia? And do you further solemnly swear or affirm that you will truly and faithfully discharge the duties required of you by law as a member of the Board of Education of Henry County to the best of your ability? Do you further swear or affirm that you're not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof, and that you're not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, nor of either of the several states, nor of any foreign state, and that you're otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and the laws of Georgia, and that you will support the constitutions of the United States and of this state, and that you've been a resident as required by the terms of this office? Do you so solemnly swear so help you God? The loyalty oath. Do you, Holly Carter Cobb, a citizen of Henry County and being an employee of Henry County Board of Education and the recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, do you hereby solemnly swear and affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Georgia? Do you so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.
cannot express how honored I am to serve in this role. But I fully recognize that this is not a job for one person. It takes a team to achieve the things that we've achieved as a board, and I could not be more proud of my fellow board members that I've had the distinct honor to serve with and just really excited and optimistic about our future. We've made great strides thus far in the past several years, and I just cannot help but be excited about what's to come for our school system. We have the most amazing community, the most amazing employees and staff, and students and parents. As many of you know, I was born and raised here and just really have deep roots in this community, and just really care deeply about our community. And really, that's what led me to run for this position to begin with was because, you know, we're not going anywhere. We're lifelong Henry County residents, and I really just wanted to find a place where I could serve and try to make a difference. So thank you all again for being here today, and thank each one of you in this room for what you do to help us as board members and help run our school system because we honestly could not do it without you. Also, I want to thank my family for being here and just the unwavering support that they constantly give me. And I just, you know, have to say that that was my dad's Bible that I had my hand on when I was just sworn in. And my dad honorably served this county on the Board of Education for a number of years as I was growing up, and he always set such a great example of integrity and honesty and faith, and that's the home I was raised in. And I have just been so determined to live that out myself in this role, too. So I'm so thankful for that example of legacy that I had in my home growing up and that I still have. So it was just so special to me to take that oath with my dad's Bible today. So I want to thank you, Dad, for your love and your support and the advice that you've given me through the years, and my family, my children, and my husband who are here today. They just are so encouraging and will do anything to help me in any way, and just without their support, none of this would be possible. I wouldn't be here with you today. So just so thankful and humbled and grateful for the community's support electing me for a second term, and I do promise to do my very, very best to work hard every day on behalf of our students because that's why I'm doing what I'm doing today. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mrs. Cobb, and thank you to Mrs. Cobb's guests for being here today. Good news is, we got treats for you in the back, all right? So, but you have to make your way out to get them. So thank you, guys, for being here today, and I hope you guys have a safe trip home, all right? And that concludes our swearing-in ceremonies. And for those tuning in online, we will be starting our board meeting here shortly.
Good afternoon, and at the first meeting of the Board of Education for 2021, I will call the meeting to order for the Henry County Schools Board of Education. Before I actually move to business item B, I would like to take a moment to just acknowledge the gravity of this season in which we serve. I would love if we could all just join together, united, in a moment of silence, to just honor, remember, reflect upon the lives that have been lost far too soon, right here in our own school community and throughout this county. Can we take a moment together? So it is at this time that I will proceed to agenda item B1, the election of a chairperson, and it is at this time I will proceed with nominations for the position of chairperson of the Henry County Board of Education for the 2021 calendar year. The nomination does not require a second. I have now opened the floor. Are there any nominations?
Ms., I'm sorry, Superintendent Davis. I'm sorry.
Yes, Doctor Nutt.
I'm just overwhelmed. This has been a great day. It is... And I can't even speak today either. I'm sorry. I've never had a loss for words. It gives me great pleasure to nominate a leader, someone that has been constant even during tough times. She's always been able to come through with a smile and a positive word for us all. Dr. Davis would like to nominate Ms. Holly Cobb, as she would accept the nomination.
Thank you, Dr. Nutt. I do have one nomination. Mrs. Holly Cobb, are there any additional nominations?
Dr. Davis, as a member of the community, before being elected to this office, I have seen the work, the tenacity, the voice of conscience and reason in Ms. Annette Edwards, and I would recommend Ms. Annette Edwards as chair for this upcoming board term or year.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. I do have a second nomination of Mrs. Annette Edwards. Are there any additional nominations? Hearing none, we will proceed to take a vote in the order that the nominations were offered. All those in favor of Mrs. Holly Cobb serving as chair of the Henry County Board of Education for the 2021 calendar year, please indicate by raising your right hand. I do see three. A majority of the board has been achieved. Congratulations, Mrs. Cobb, for chair of the Board of Education for 2021, and I will now turn the meeting over to you. Thank you so much, Dr. Davis, and to the board for their support.
Thank you so much, Dr. Davis, and to the board for their support. I genuinely appreciate it. I will now move to item B2, the election of a vice chairperson for the Henry County Board of Education. I will now open the floor for nominations. Do I have a nomination for vice chairperson for Henry County Board of Education?
Mrs. Cobb, I have a nomination. It is my great privilege to nominate Mrs. Annette Edwards as vice chair for the Henry County Board of Education.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Pope. Are there any other nominations for vice chairperson for the Henry County Board of Okay, hearing none. We will vote on the nomination that is before us. If you are in favor of supporting Mrs. Annette Edwards for vice chairperson for the Henry County Board of Education, would you please raise your right hand? That is a 5-0 vote. Congratulations, Mrs. Edwards, on being vice chair. And I believe there's no further business before the Board of Education today. I will now adjourn the meeting. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you.